Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
All right. Well, my computer's starting up. If you would please stand and join me in the flag school. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I believe I don't have a printed... But I will have one in a moment, but thank you very much. And then the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. The time will be displayed on the screen behind me as a reminder. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Karen McFadden. Hello, I guess you can hear me?
Yep.
I'm Karen McFadden. I've lived 54 years in a house at 19604 66th Avenue Northeast. Walking distance that way. I'm here to talk to you pretty much some of the same things I've said before, but I fine tuned it tonight. When you realize that the smart thing to do is to go elsewhere and leave St. Edward State Park, the bats will thank you, the birds and beasts of the forest will thank you, the boys and girls who love to play on grass fields will thank you, and I will thank you for recognizing that with much less taxpayer money, the city could combine funds with the North Shore School District to improve school facilities already with established parking access and functioning fields. Let's do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
April Rose.
Hello. Thank you for this time to speak. My name is April Rose, and I'm a 13-year Kenmore resident, mother of six children, ages 18 years to three months old. And I am the founder of the nonprofit Camp Roots Forest School. It is in its fifth year of operation at St. Edward State Park. Much like the Lorax, I am here to speak for the field, the creatures, the wetland, the stream, the trees, the stars, the soil, and the humans that wish to preserve and protect the wetland and everything surrounding it from irreversible destruction. At Camp Roots, we teach reverence for every living thing. We are on the ball field five days a week, year-round. It is a natural space that not only deserves to stay natural, but that deserves to be preserved. I'm not against ball fields in Kenmore. I have plenty of children, and we've done Little League many times. But I am against the idea that the city of Kenmore will be improving the ball fields as the proposal suggests. As a Kenmore resident, I have felt proud to live in a city that prioritizes the environment, or so it seems. Just last week, the city of Kenmore recognized the efforts of the Snow King Watershed Council that works to protect local creeks and natural areas through citizen action and education. And one of the city council's goals for 2019-2020 is to protect and enhance the climate, water, air, and forest environment. Destroying the St. Edward State Park wetlands and surrounding ball field area is not in alignment with the 10th goal or any kind of positive environmental outlook. I would like to share excerpts from our Camp Roots Forest School Observation Journals. The journal entries speak for the wildlife and environment that can't speak for themselves. Wednesday, 1/16/2018. We explored the pond that runs along the far edge of the field and found all sorts of unexpected life. Tiny insects sat on and flew above the water, red copepod's tiny crustaceans rested on submerged leaves, caddisfly larvae hid inside their hodgepodge homes of sand and plant matter, a caterpillar laid near the bottom of the pond, and a jelly that looked like eggs undulated in the slight current. Friday, 3/16/2018. On our hike, we found Douglas squirrel and duck tracks before we were drawn by the sound of frogs from the ditch pond. We found frog eggs and salamander larvae, which we hadn't seen during our recent pond study, and managed to catch a frog. It's a Pacific chorus frog, aka Pacific tree frog or state amphibian. You can identify it by the black stripe running from the snout to shoulder. Friday began with the children tossing... This is Friday 5/24. Tossing off backpacks and running immediately across the field to the wetlands that are full of tadpoles. Our sub told the children he had never seen a salamander in real life, and they took in that as an instant challenge. Before long, they had collected multiple tadpoles that were clearly metamorphosizing into salamanders. With glee, the children exclaimed "Baby dragon!" when they noted the front leg buds on the tadpoles, knowing this indicates salamanders developing, not frogs. The St. Edward ball field is vast, and so are the reasons why it shouldn't be developed. We could spend the entire meeting discussing more reasons why, but I will leave you with this. The Amazon is burning. Our green space is diminishing by the minute. Please do not add this special land to the list of developed and desecrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Karen Prince.
Thank you. Good evening. I live at 65th Avenue Northeast, and I too am speaking. My comments are about the ball field tonight. I must say, it's been good to read over the past year the articles in the Kenmore Quarterly about the council's actions to increase environmental protection. For example, passing an ordinance to reduce plastic bag use, updating your critical area regulations to improve and conserve Kenmore's wetlands, fish, and wildlife habitats. The Kenmore Quarterly has five ways streams and wetlands keep us and our environment healthy. Choosing and also choosing one of the city council goals for the year of 10, one of 10, to quote "protect and enhance the climate, water, air, and forest environment." I am grateful for your efforts on these important issues. Many of us strongly share those values and want you to apply them to the ecosystems, streams, and wetlands within the state park. The proposed ball field does not align with these values. In 2008, the ball field first proposal was rejected by the Washington State Parks Commission because of environmental concerns. It was simply not the right place for such a field. As global warming increases, the pressures on Planet Earth and our population continue to grow. It is more urgent than ever that we preserve and our remaining natural habitats. I call upon you to seriously seek partnerships in finding other locations with North Shore School District, for example, as Kirkland has done with the Lake Washington School District. And the recently renovated Morelands Park Athletic Field is surely a success story of cooperation among, and I quote from one of the quarterlies, I think, "The school district, neighbors, North Shore Little League, North Shore Youth Soccer Association, elected officials, and city staff all work together." And that is bravo. That's great. We need that. I call upon you to stop the hemorrhage of our taxpayer money. Project costs originally were estimated at $2.5 million and have now more than doubled. Really? $5 million for one ball field? No wonder, quote, "Operating revenues are not keeping pace with the cost of doing business," and Kenmore is, quote, "Facing upcoming structural deficits in operating budgets," which I just read somewhere on the web. I call upon you to widen your vision. Think of what possibilities exist for education and stewardship with land preserved as it is. I call upon the council to stop this wildly expensive and environmentally destructive proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Tracy Banaschinsky.
My name is Tracy Banaschinsky, and I live at 5863 Northeast 197th Street in Kenmore. I am stepping into the conversation about the proposed ball field development at St. Edward State Park to provide a voice for the natural environment and to advocate for solutions that represent the best interests of the wetlands, because those interests are not separate from the interests of human beings, as well as to collaborate with the multiple stakeholders in that space to find satisfying solutions. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the importance of wetland buffers. This may or may not be reviewed for you. I know this has been an ongoing proposal. Either way, I hope you will take it as an opportunity to reflect on what is important and what's at stake. First, Washington State categorizes wetlands into four categories. The St. Edward wetland is a category-two wetland. Category-two wetlands are difficult to replace and provide high levels of some functions. They require a relatively high level of protection. Wetland buffers are the natural undeveloped vegetated area surrounding a wetland. Buffers are a crucial part of the wetland system and must also be protected. Buffers help filter sediments and other pollutants from stormwater runoff. Buffers also slow stormwater, which reduces erosion and slows down floodwaters. In addition, they provide a protected pathway for wildlife, species moving from the wetland to other upland habitat areas. They are vital to the livelihood of many species that rely on upland areas near wetlands to complete their life cycles. Buffers also provide a visual and noise barrier between the wetland and adjacent human activities. The Washington State Department of Ecology says that wetland buffers are essential for wetlands protection. No scientific study, no government agency, and no recommendations made during any communications with wetland specialists nationwide suggest it otherwise. The proposed ball field development would build into 90% of the required wetland buffer, putting it within 10 feet of the wetland. It is true that our wetland currently has a degraded buffer. It is mown and without the vegetation that would make it healthiest. However, completing the proposed mitigation in a 10-foot buffer, ceasing mowing and planting native wetland plants would not be enough of an improvement over current conditions to justify the development. A 10-foot buffer, even a mitigated one, is too small to provide sufficient protective functions for the wetland. The wetland needs all 100 feet of its buffer for optimal health. Instead of degrading the kind of habitat that we are elsewhere working actively to restore, we have the amazing and wonderful opportunity, I would call it an awesome responsibility, to recognize the value of the St. Edward wetland and wetland buffer to the health and well-being of our watershed. I come before you tonight to ask you to exercise restraint when considering options for ball field development in Kenmore. It is true that children need inviting in safe places to play organized sports. It is also true that Kenmore does not need to build ball fields in and adjacent to environmentally sensitive land, because everyone needs a healthy watershed and an environment that can help us weather the coming decades of climate change already underway. If the city of Kenmore exercises restraint, and I know that it is within our power, other groups can step up and restore the full 100-foot wetland buffer. We need this as much as the wetland needs this, because we are not separate from what happens to the wetland. It would be an incredible gift to our community and this region, and Kenmore can play its part by exercising restraint. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Susan C. I apologize. I wasn't sure about the last name.
I have some handouts. Can I hand them out before my clock starts?
Could you please state your name and city?
Susan Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. So I have some handouts.
And the city that you live in?
Kirkland.
Great. Yes, I mean, if you want to give them to the clerk, she will hand them to us.
So I'm just going to say what the handout includes, and you can start my clock. The handout includes my comments, a one-pager on the Environmental Education and Research Center, an executive summary of the final report to the State Parks Commission, an executive summary of health and economic benefits to near-mine nature, and an executive summary of education benefits to environmental education overall. Okay. So my name is Susan Carlson, and I want to use my time to update you on the Environmental Education Research Center at St. Edward State Park. First, I believe most of you are aware that the lease with Daniel's Real Estate to renovate the seminary included 1,200 to 2,000 square feet for the Environmental Education and Research Center, which is now located in the gym annex. Parks entered into a memorandum of understanding with the University of Washington-Battle to run a planning process in 2018, including three well-attended public meetings in Kenmore, Kirkland, and Battle. With the community's help, the vision for the EERC is a living laboratory where experience transforms learning and stewardship takes root. The EERC planning process concluded with a 75-page report to Parks, including recommendations for pre-K, K-12, two- and four-year college students, along with many community engagement opportunities, including interpretive tours of the parks, citizen science, habitat restoration, faculty lectures, and more. We have shortlisted two of Seattle's most highly respected firms for the design, built out of the gym annex, including Sunberg, Kennedy, and Basetti. Parks expects to have one of the other firms under contract by the end of the year. Either Basetti or Sunberg will deliver a bright and inspiring space for the EERC that is integrated with the park's landscape and the DRE Historic Lodge. Both the lodge and the EERC are well underway and are targeted for opening summer 2021. Integrated Daniel's Lodge and Environmental Education Research Center stand to create a world-class overnight and day-use destination and place of learning about the historic, cultural, and natural history of the park. While we are fortunate to have the indoor space, the true vision for the EERC is of the entire park landscape, including its interconnected habitats, mature forests, fields, streams, wetlands, shorefront, as opportunities for nature connection and environmental learning in building stewardship ethic among our participants. The natural ball fields are highly important to the success of the EERC. Two of St. Edward's existing environmental education program providers, Camp Roots and Wilderness Awareness School, make heavy use of the natural fields for their opening circles, non-competitive team-building games, before embarking into other areas of the park. As you've heard, the wetlands and drainage ditches surrounding the park are full of life and provide important opportunities to teach watershed science, stream, and aquatic health. As you've heard, they are filled with amphibians and macroinvertebrates that few people get to learn about before exploring the park. I see I need to wrap up. I would simply suggest that transforming the fields will compromise the opportunities to further optimize the park for environmental education and interpretation. And I would request that you consider the impacts on the opportunities provided by the Integrated Daniel's Real Estate Lodge and EERC when considering future efforts to develop the natural fields. Thank you.
Phyllis Finley.
Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. It's general knowledge now that the city will soon be operating in a deficit because operating revenues are not keeping pace with the cost of doing business. I'm focusing tonight on the cost of doing business. The St. Edward Ball Field Development Project has now doubled to $5 million. Add the city manager's expertise with budget projections, and the project can more realistically be expected to reach over $7.5 million in $2019. The city website explains, quote, "Costs for athletic fields are significant, and there are competing needs for cities' limited resources," unquote. Well, isn't that an understatement? In the face of the city's budget shortfall, every dollar spent should support the largest and most diverse portion of the population. The exorbitant expenditure at St. Ed serves a small and mostly homogeneous segment of Kenmore's population and is not a priority with the majority of respondents of the city's statistically valid survey. Are you listening to the collective sentiment of the majority of your constituents? The open space and natural environment that is the essence of the St. Edward ball field is preferred by the majority of Kenmore residents over a multi-use athletic field. The field as it is serves a larger and more diverse population than a multimillion-dollar sports complex ever could. In addition, as it is, it serves in a way that no other space can. It cannot be recreated elsewhere. If you need another source of verification of citizen sentiment, please read the more than 150 comments on the State Parks website that were submitted in August as part of the SEFA scoping process. How can it be justified to spend millions of dollars that the city doesn't have on a project that its citizens don't want? As recently as September, with the budget deficit looming, the council authorized an increase of $7,300 to yet another consultant contract for St. Ed's. At your 2019 retreat, you agreed with one dissenter to take the St. Edward path to its logical conclusion. Please define exactly what you consider to be that logical conclusion. Exactly how much money will you continue to authorize to be spent during a budget crisis before you acknowledge that the city really cannot afford this path? How much time and money has been lost during the past four years, while more than $400,000 has been devoted entirely to administrative and planning costs for an elaborate sports complex rather than for a more realistic and appropriately designed project that could have been completed by now and in active service for our Kenmore youth? Despite your messaging, the city may have explored, but has not exhausted the pursuit of a school district partnership. It is not time to put a bow on that one. In the recent partnership between Lake Washington School District and the city of Kirkland, the Finn Hill Middle School renovation was completed in a timely manner with a cost of $159,000, and included items such as design and engineering, new bases, irrigation system upgrade, infield restoration, new grass and topsoil installment, project management, construction inspections, sales tax, and more. Please meet with those parties to learn how they successfully engaged in such an impressive partnership. I am requesting a fiscally responsible approach to city spending that preserves open space and respects citizen priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Excuse me. Nancy Hansen? So you're going to pass? Okay. Nobody else has signed up, mayor?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments, Ms. McFadden, Ms. Rose, Ms. Prince, Ms. Banaschinsky, and Ms. Carlson, and Ms. Finley. Thank you. The State Parks is doing an environmental impact study right now, and nothing will be done until the results of that impact study have been published. So I thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
移到 Second.
It moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? On the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is business agenda. Ordinance number 19-0499. An ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, authorize issuance of one or more series of unlimited tax general obligation bonds of the city in the aggregate principle of not to exceed $10 million to finance costs related to constructing, developing, acquiring, equipping, upgrading, and improving walkways and waterfront access in the city and paying the costs of issuing the bonds, providing the form, terms, and covenants of the bonds, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds, and delegating authority to approve final terms of the bonds, and providing for other matters relating thereto. Ms. Gregory? That's a long one.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I was hoping that you would read it into the record. So, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, you will be asked to adopt bond ordinance number 19-0499. And with me tonight is Deanna Gregory of Pacifica Law Group, who will explain this action to you and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Am I on there? We will need to add more to that title next time. I'm Deanna Gregory, my partner, Pacifica Law Group. Thank you for having me here tonight. I was here a couple weeks ago to discuss the bond ordinance at the first reading. So tonight, in front of you is the ordinance for the second and final reading. And what you have in front of you really have... There's been no changes, except with the exception of the approval date. So, of course, we added that and added the ordinance number. But other than that, it is the same document that was reviewed by the council and discussed a few weeks ago. This is the only action... The consideration tonight is the only action that we'll be asked to take with respect to these bonds so long as the parameters that are approved have been met with respect to the bond issue. So as we discussed a few weeks ago, Section 12 of this ordinance delegates the authority to approve the final terms of the bonds so long as certain parameters are met. It's what we call a delegation ordinance. And those parameters are the not-to-exceed amount of $10 million, the not-to-exceed true interest cost of, let me see here, 4%, and the final maturity date of December 1, 2039. And so so long as those parameters can be met, there'll be no further action that needs to be taken by the council. The delegation period is six months. So if the bonds aren't sold within that six months, or if, for some reason, the market changes and those parameters can't be satisfied, then we will be back to council for additional approval. While the ordinance hasn't changed, a couple of the facts have changed a little bit. I know we spoke about a schedule, also about the series of bonds. One thing with regard to the schedule is that the issuance of the bonds itself has bumped a little bit to just adjust that timing of the bonds with the project needs of the city. So we anticipate that it will still happen within that six-month delegation period, but that urgency is... It may not happen so immediately, so right away. And then we also talked about a tax-exempt series, and there may be two series, but that would just be to take advantage of some of the market conditions that would result in more favorable conditions to the city. And that just has to do with the structuring that your financial advisor would guide the finance team on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and that's essentially it from the ordinance standpoint.
Questions? It looks like we don't have any questions. So... Get to where I need to be here. The chair then will ask for a motion to adopt bond ordinance number 19-0499. Is there a motion?
移到 Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Unanimously, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the work you guys have put into this. And so we have certainly been kept appraised every step of the way. So I guess that's why we had no questions tonight, because we've been thoroughly briefed. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution number 19-331, amending the city purchasing and contracting policies to allow an optional invitational process for selection of artists providing artwork services funded under the 1% for the arts. Ms. Spint?
Good evening. So, yes, staff is recommending that council approve the resolution this evening to allow this narrow exception to the city's contracting and purchasing policies. What this would allow, then, would be an optional process for public art projects funded under the 1% for the arts program. This exception would then allow an artist to contract directly through the RFQ process without sort of a general open call. So that is what staff is recommending. And if council passes this resolution, it relates directly to the next agenda item regarding the public art selection process for the walkways and waterways projects, because staff would like to use the invitational process for the art for those three projects. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
So I know the state has some rules around city contracting and what we have to put out for RFQs and what we don't. I assume that this is... I assume that this meets state requirements?
It does. The city attorney also has reviewed this proposal.
I assume so. I just wanted to double-check. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
I don't have a question. I don't know if we're in the comment part. Maybe I'll wait for it. I'm just a little uncomfortable with making this exception to a regular open RFP process. I feel like it could limit who would have access to the resources that we're going to bring to bear, given that they're not that much. You know, that's something to consider. But I still feel like an open process is the right way, and it's the normal way for a government procurement.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Oh, Councilmember Curtis?
I think I have a question then, based on that. My understanding is part of the regular...
My understanding is part of the regular process is that we're generally required to take the lowest bidder.
That's for a bid process. This is for an RFQ, so it doesn't have a bid to it. So it's sort of a different, the bid process is different than the RFQ process.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 19-331, amending Resolution 1703, Section 7 of the Purchasing and Contracting Policies as presented. Is there a motion? Hearing none. Dies for a lack of motion.
Okay.
Because I can't, I can't make the motion, and nobody else wants it to, so it looks like it's dead.
Fair enough.
So, does that then invalidate Item C? Public Art Selection Approach Process and Proposed, Approved Public Art Selection Approach for the Process of Public Art for Walkways and Waterways Project, Log Boom, and Squires Landing and Rodent and Parks?
No, it does not invalidate it. I think what it would then do is that we would have to do the general open RFQ process, and that just adds time to the process. So one of the reasons that we were hoping to have the selection process, it would kind of reduce the amount of time needed. But we can certainly move forward with that.
All right. So you want to do presentation on?
Yes, please.
On the motion to approve a public art selection approach?
Yes. So, given that council did not approve the amendment to the contracting policies, and staff would then move forward with an RFQ through the open process, rather than the invitational process, so that would be the only change to what is presented to you. We have been working with a consultant artist, Caroline Law, who has put together the art approach for the Walkways and Waterways Project that is included in your agenda. And that approach, then, would be part of the RFQ process. So that is one part that we would like, I would like to kind of receive acknowledgement, that that is okay to go. And the second part of that is that for this art selection process for the Walkways and Waterways Projects, we would like to have an ad hoc committee be part of that selection process, to be able to review the RFQ proposals, interview the artists through that process, and bring forward a recommendation to council. So again, we have, in your agenda packet, put together who would, kind of qualifications for people that might be put on that selection process. So again, we are looking for council acknowledgement that those qualifications make sense. And then we would, if that does make sense, then staff would then move forward with contacting individuals to serve on that committee. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions about the art approach or the committee's function and purpose.
Any questions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
Just had a little one on page, well, there's multiple documents, but it's page five of the... Of the framework. Where, and it's specific to Log Boom.
Mm-hmm.
There's a section with three bullet points. It says, "The most effective way for art to impact this park is to," park is to, and there's three bullet points. That kind of phrasing and specificity isn't indicated for the other parks, and it just seems kind of restrictive. I mean, that's the only problem I had with this whole document. But it just seemed kind of overly prescriptive.
Okay. Happy to change that, to be more consistent with the other two.
Yeah, yeah. One other little thing. This is a very serious and detailed document, which is great. I also think of art as being, you know, potentially playful, particularly in parks. So I don't know whether, you know, that could be recognized in any way, that it could be fun or playful.
Yep.
Or have a surprise element or anything like that.
We can certainly add that into the criteria.
Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Marshall?
Okay, so not to go too far into aesthetics and public substance, but I would just encourage, I think I probably said something about this at the last retreat, one, one way I think in which public art can fall short is to take the example of our illustrious neighbor, two cities to the east, Woodenville, where there are some very well-meaning folks, but had a number of bronzed bunny rabbits in a giant baseball mitt at the baseball field. It kind of goes with that, sure, but you don't want to get too corny overall. And this is all guidance, obviously. You know, the council's not going to be dictating what the aesthetics are or anything. Just, I could not help trying to encourage some amount of creativity. Don't be afraid of movement, of life, certainly room for playfulness, but of abstraction as well, and all kinds of different aesthetic possibilities. Things getting too safe can detract.
Okay. I appreciate the feedback.
Bronze bunnies are fun, too. Oh, it's in South Carolina. I guess, mice on Maine, yeah. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Smith?
Is, how do you, how do you address something like what Councilmember Marshall just mentioned? And the reason I ask is because I, what I fear more than anything is trying to control the process too much. And although you may not like bronze bunnies in a mitt, I mean, all's I think about is I think about the potential art that was possibly going in at the town square. And I actually liked it, and I know there's others that hated it. And it was a perfect example of, the more people you ask on art, the more opinions you're going to have. And, and so, I would hope that there's less control on the process as far as whatever the artists have to work with, and to allow more flexibility.
Okay. Well, I think that's why we've sort of written, in general terms, the approach as being broad, about what the artist needs to consider in terms of making sure it fits within the park and the functions of the park, but not being too prescriptive.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? So the Chair then will entertain a motion to approve the Public Art Selection Approach in RFQ in the process for public art at the Walkways and Waterways Project at Log Boom, Squires, and Rodent and Parks. Is that keeping with what?
It is, and assuming that you would like me to incorporate Councilmember Shrubnik's comments.
Yes.
Okay.
And another comment, the draft schedule will probably be different based on the fact that we didn't approve the fast track.
It might have to shift a little bit, because we now have to go through sort of the formal publication process, yes. So we will have to amend that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this with those two changes, the playful idea and the schedule will change.
Yep.
I'll second. Councilmember Curtis, I'm sorry, can you repeat the two changes?
The two changes would be, we'd add the idea of playfulness, and then we would change the draft schedule as needed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
What does playfulness, what do you envision as playfulness? Councilmember Shrubnik?
Whatever a four-year-old says.
It's a concept. It's just, it's another concept to introduce in here.
I think fun was maybe the word.
Yeah.
What does it mean?
I think that's up to the artist.
As a general concept.
Okay. All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Any comments? Any further questions? Councilmember Shrubnik? All right. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Passed. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Mid-biennium budget adjustments for 2019 and 2020, and salary plan for 2020. Ms. Gregory?
Give the city clerk a minute to pull up the agenda bill. She'll turn it on now. Once again, good evening, Mayor and Council. The mid-biennial review, as required by RCW, is complete. And tonight, I'd like to review with you the proposed amendments by staff to the biennial budget that was adopted in November of 2018. Next Monday evening, the proposed amendments will also be introduced in public hearing. And if there are no modifications or changes, a budget amendment ordinance can be adopted that night. The funds affected by the proposed amendments include the General Fund, the Street Fund, the Transportation Capital and Park Capital Funds, Park Impact Fee Fund, the Sumamish River Bridge Fund, Surface Water Management, and the Swamp Creek Basin. So to walk through the proposed amendments most efficiently, I'm going to show those on the screen as we go through the various funds. This is the same worksheet that was attached to the agenda bill. So let's go up to the beginning. And first, we'll talk about the General Fund. So in the General Fund, the year 2018 closed with a fund balance of $4.9 million, which was 1.1 million more than had been projected or budgeted. Also, we noticed that this year that sales tax revenues are exceeding the budget expectation. So amendment to that revenue line item of an additional $550,000 is expected. So that one, that $4.9 million fund balance provided an opportunity for the city to allocate an additional $1 million for slurry and crack sealing, which is one of the proposed amendments, as a transfer to the Street Fund. Also, $810,000 was the amount unspent from the $854,000 budget that was established in 2018 for the public works operational startup costs. This is proposed to be carried forward and rebudgeted in 2019, since most of those startup costs have been incurred this year. And while still maintaining a $2.5 million fund balance, $624,000 is available to be set aside in the Strategic Opportunities Fund, which could bring that reserve to over $3 million by 2020. Other expenditure budget amendments proposed for the General Fund include $140,000 related to the Financial Sustainability Project, which covers primarily the citizen survey cost, project management by Tori Brazidas, and the financial analysis by management partners. Also, $25,000 is proposed to acquire a vehicle for Development Services, who has recently added the Development Review Engineer to their staff. The net results of these amendments would result in a projected General Fund balance of $2.8 million. The next fund, the Street Fund, the only proposed amendments in the Street Fund are to recognize the $1 million from the General Fund as revenue, and then increasing the road preservation budget to provide for the slurry and crack sealing activities. So there's no net impact on that fund. Next is the Park Capital Fund. There's several things going on in here. First of all, the state allocated $151,000 to the city for Twin Springs Park. So that's recognized both as a revenue and then an increase of the budget for the Twin Springs Park project. The Rodent and Parks Public Boathouse budget was amended in the recently approved CIP. So we're just recognizing and putting in place the King County Youth Activities Grant, and recognizing that as well as a contribution that's projected to be received from the North Shore School District for that project. And then also increasing the project budget. Not exactly by those amounts, but by what is expected to be the remaining budget per the adopted CIP. The St. Edward EIS budget and funding requires amendment as the RCO funds must be replaced by city impact fee dollars. And the total expected cost of the EIS is expected to be about $220,000. So that requires a transfer of additional money from park impact fees. And we adjusted the budget. We originally thought that budget would be 300. Now it's projected to be about $220,000. Moving to the Park Impact Fee Fund, you see that $120,000 being transferred out to the park impact fee, as I just mentioned. So that's the only item of note in that fund. In the Sumamish River Bridge Fund, amendments recognize a contribution or a transfer of $465,024 from the Surface Water Management Fund to provide a resource for the surface water components of the bridge project budget. The offset is seen in the Surface Water Fund below. And also in this fund, additional fees are expected due to the recent rate increase in 2019, and we're finding that the receipts are much higher than we budgeted for 2019. Also in the Surface Water Management Fund, two vehicles are requested for, for the surface water technicians and the seasonal and intern staff. The Surface Water, or the Swamp Creek Basin Fund is the next fund. And here we are recognizing the transfer out of funds to the Park Capital Fund that relate to the Squires Landing land conversion acquisition, which I forgot to mention when we were looking at the Park Capital Fund. Sorry about that. The land acquisition was, is determined to be, or the budget is determined to be less than we originally thought, and we amended it in the CIP from 1.7 million to 1.2 million. Most of that is funded by King County Conservation District money, and the balance to come from the Swamp Creek Basin Fund. So that money is scheduled to be transferred out of the Swamp Creek Basin Fund. In the Equipment Replacement Fund, we are proposing to acquire an electric vehicle for shared pool car purposes to replace the tired old Taurus that we've had for many years. And in the Strategic Opportunities Fund, recognizing the $624,000 transfer to that fund from the General Fund that I mentioned at the beginning of this schedule. So that concludes the budget amendments that are proposed at this time. And just as a reminder, I'll review these again next week in the context of the public hearing, and anticipate that the ordinance can be approved at that time. The other item, which would be included with the ordinance, would be an updated salary plan for 2020 that incorporates an increase for all ranges of 1.7%, which was the June CPIW, and that's the index we have traditionally used on our salary plans. This is well within the salary increase assumptions for the budget. And I'd also like to point out the extraordinarily good news that the Health First Medical, Delta Dental, and Vision Insurance premiums, which are paid by the city or the employees, will not experience an increase in 2020. I can't remember when that has ever happened. So that's good news for the budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So on the electrical vehicle, you know, if you just wait a little bit, you can get the new Ford electric, electric vehicle.
A new, which kind?
The new Mustang that's coming out.
Oh, the Mustang. Oh, of course.
All right. Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor.
Actually, kind of building off what the mayor was saying, I was surprised to see there's four vehicles in here. Only one of them is proposed to be electric. I understand why a public, I can't remember which one it was. Was it, oh, I can understand why the swim vehicles might need to be a little larger for what they're doing. I don't understand why Development Services couldn't also survive on a bolt to get around. I think as we're looking at, as we're looking at replacing our vehicles, I think we should take a more, kind of, a deeper look, trying to minimize our carbon footprint as much as we can with those purchases, and frankly, also just kind of leading by example a little bit. And I would strongly encourage us to, unless we need something larger, we need a truck, I mean, there's reasons for that. I don't see any reason why Development Services wouldn't need something, you know, couldn't get away with something like a Bolt also. Is there also something in the budget for putting in charging stations, or how are you gonna?
I don't think we have anything in the budget for charging stations. We have the one at the hangar. Rob, can you help me with that? And my response, though, to your question is, you know, these electric vehicles are expensive.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to be fiscally responsible by not, you know, replacing a lot of our fleet with that, but we're sure happy to consider that. And we can get certain, like the Bolt, we can get those off the estate contract.
Well, and the MNO, though, on a lot of those can be a little bit lower, because you're not dealing with as many moving parts. You know, you deal with the battery when that croaks after, you know, whatever that lifespan is, but, you know, you're not dealing with oil changes, you're not dealing with a lot of that sort of routine maintenance that the rest of us have to deal with every 3,000, 6,000 miles. But I am curious, because I would hate for us to be using our vehicle and taking up the parking spot for the public also.
Yeah, I don't think that was envisioned, but I'm not.
No, I was gonna use the residential approach and just plug into a 110 outlet and extension cord in the parking garage, just like other homeowners do with their electric vehicles. That said, Nancy Owsley has some interesting thoughts on that.
Good evening, Council. It just seems like yesterday that we were talking about the Puget Sound Energy franchise. And you'll recall that we really prioritized having the ability to get charging stations here or there. Just very recently, PSE staff got in touch with us and let us know that they have just rolled out a grant program for workplace and for multifamily residential uses. And so they expect us to submit at least one application. I think this would be a great one to go with, for our first application for something here at City Hall.
Okay.
So we may get some grant funds.
Any other questions? Last month, I think it was, we approved $1,000 for NUSHA, the Human Services. And it was suggested at that time that I should ask for the $1,000 to go to one of the companies that are providing services to the city of Kenmore that we denied some funding for, to try to make it up to get more services for our residents. So I would like to see if there's a way we could put $1,000 in the Human Services side of things to one of the companies that we perhaps didn't give what was requested to, that provides a definite benefit for Kenmore residents.
Okay. Would that be through NUSHA or instead of?
This would be using
Or in addition?
Using the $1,000 that we would have given to Human Services, that we went with NUSHA instead. I would like to see $1,000 given to an organization that we didn't fulfill their request that is delivering definite benefits to the city of Kenmore. So in other words, maybe they asked for 15,000 and we gave them seven, but they're doing substantial work in Kenmore. I would like to see them get that $1,000 that it was suggested that I asked for during this budget adjustment.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis.
Got that, Rob?
So it seems to me like traditionally, the budget adjustment that we're talking about now is kind of the true ups to keep us on track. Decisions we've mostly already made. To me, this feels like a brand-new proposal, and it feels like that should be part of the biennial budget process rather than part of this. So I'd be inclined to not add anybody's ideas right now, how we can spend more money.
Well, I was just going by what was told to me when we approved the $1,000 for NUSHA. That's also part of the annual budget process, getting that $1,000 over. And I would just like to make it up for the organization that was turned down, who delivers definite benefits to the city of Kenmore. Councilmember Marshall.
I have a clarification. It was my understanding that, I don't remember quite the same, maybe we'll have to go back to the minutes, but if we want to, you know, allocate an additional $1,000 to the fund that goes to Human Services from the city, that's a proposal. It's my understanding that Kelly actually makes the decisions about who, which organizations get those resources, and that that's an annual process that organizations submit. They'll be doing that, and I think in the spring?
That's correct.
And I'm not trying to interrupt that process. I just want to add $1,000 back into that pot.
Into the budget, okay.
So that she can do it.
Okay. I think that could be absorbed in the budget without a specific amendment.
Councilmember Marshall.
And so you're not intending any particular organization right now? Just into the general?
Let her do her job. I just want to make sure that $1,000 gets back in there.
Okay. For my clarification, we approved $1,000 for NUSHA.
Right. And that came, my understanding was from a pot of money that was going to different human service agencies.
I understood it was in addition to what had been budgeted for the human services agencies.
Could have been in addition, but the fact was, it could have also been in addition into the pot. And I would like to see that go in to the general pot and let you guys do whatever you do with it. And if that can be absorbed into the budget, that's great.
Okay. Well, we will do what we do.
That's all I ask, do what you do. Councilmember Curtis.
I would also comment, I don't remember there being a specific link that we're going to put in another $1,000.
I remember that conversation, because the person next to me brought it up and suggested it.
Okay.
Okay. So you don't necessarily need a motion from us on this?
Not tonight. I do not.
Thank you. It was informational only. Thank you.
I will, however, next week.
That's fine.
The public hearing and the budget adoption.
Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is Public Works Engineering update. Mr. Vincente.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I gotta find the, oh, right there. All righty. So we're here tonight to talk to, about some of the things that engineering has done throughout 2019. Before I do that, as you notice, I brought the whole team with me here tonight. So I want to just give some real brief introductions. I'm sure it's been a while since you put a face to a name. So on the far end, of course, you know Kent Vaughn, our senior civil engineer, who takes care of our transportation capital projects. Next to him is Janet Quinn. She's our permit specialist, who takes care of all of our administrative needs within the group. Right here, we've got Jared Smith. He's our right-of-way inspector. He handles our franchise utility permitting and takes care of all of our service requests that relate to the infrastructure within the right-of-way, including code compliance. Next to me is Terry Velenberg. She is our civil engineer, who helps with capital projects as well, and also is working on a surface water project. And then on the end, we've got Toby Bennett-Gold, who's our traffic engineer, that takes care of all of the traffic issues that come into the city. So he's got the fun job of the group. So, all right. So with that, just as an overview, Public Works Engineering takes care of capital improvement projects, primarily transportation projects are the ones that we work on. We're also responsible for the pavement management program, so looking at the needs in the city regarding pavement, if we want to do slurry seals or overlays, that sort of thing. We also have traffic engineering in our group, which, all things traffic. And then we also do, in general, with the right-of-way management, which is the franchise utility permitting, service requests, code compliance, road standards, ADA compliance, that sort of thing.
John, I'm really sorry to interrupt, just real quick. We're having some technical difficulties. I know your monitors are cut off a little bit, but I did put this presentation on the council agenda, so you can follow along that way if you're missing something. It's fine what you see up on the screen, but they're cut off a little bit on their screen, so just a heads up. Thanks.
So with that, we're going to start with the transportation capital projects that were completed in 2019. And Kent, if you want to take over.
Yeah, so just briefly, so we built two projects this year. 181st sidewalks, which was funded just a little bit over half by the Transportation Improvement Board sidewalk program. It's substantially complete. We've got a couple of wrinkles that we're working on with the punch list. It provides 500, roughly a little bit over 500 linear feet of sidewalk, ranging from six to eight feet wide. Maybe go to the next slide, some highlights, landscaped amenity zone. We've maximized our on-street parking in 181st per the direction of council, so we've roughly got 16 on-street parallel parking stalls that will be added with the project. And also, we've added the street and pedestrian lighting, which currently is not on, which is one of the issues that we need to resolve. Let me go to the next slide. We were able to preserve the large sycamore tree, which is very happy. In order to do that, we had to pinch the sidewalk down a little bit, five and a half feet wide, around there. Next slide. And we added some fun sidewalk inserts into the sidewalk. We've got Hank, and we've got the City of Kenmore Corporation medallion that we put at the intersection of 181st and 67th. For 153rd Safe Road to School sidewalk, we provided roughly around 800 feet of sidewalk between Wantie Drive and 70th. The majority of this project was funded by WashDOT and their Safe Road to School program. Again, it's substantially complete. There's a couple of minor punch list issues, but highlights with this project, eight-foot wide sidewalks along that stretch, which seems like really wide, and it's getting a lot of use in the neighborhood, which everybody seems to be pretty happy about. We've also got Hank as well, he's there, but we've got some angled parking that we're able to kind of include in this project, six stalls. When we put the sidewalk in, we kind of displaced some shoulder where people were using that to park, to go to the restaurant. So we were able to add some of that in. We also had some students provide some art, and we made a sign, so you might be able to see that next time you're out there, with the arrowhead hawk. And that, I think that's, oh, and also the corner of 153rd and Wantie Drive, it was quite hardscape paving. And with this project, we were able to build that feature wall with some artwork and some landscaping, which really softened that corner, and it kind of blends in with what we're going to do with Wantie Drive in the future. I think it turned out pretty well. And it's also got the nice little bench to hang out on.
Next, we'll get into pavement preservation, where Tobin's gonna chat. Hopefully that works. Can you hear me? Okay. Sorry if I lose my voice, I was sick today. So I wanted to give us just a little bit of background on what informs our pavement management strategy. I think many people have seen this, this is a pavement deterioration curve. And the main thing I want to remember about this is, in the first 75% of the service life of our pavement, we lose 40% of our pavement durability, but we lose the next 40%, and only 12% of the service life after that. So the real goal here is, the treatments required to rejuvenate our pavement also become increasingly more expensive as we allow it to deteriorate. So early on, if you catch your pavement early, you can get a fog seal for 50 cents a square yard. But when you look at letting your road go to failure, that can be $200 per square yard to reconstruct your roads. So our strategy here, this year, has been really focusing on slurry seal as our centerpiece. And this is because slurry seal is going to bring our roads up from the bottom of good quality back up to the top of good quality, where they can then continue to deteriorate in that zone where we can catch them before they fall off the cliff. That cliff right there is really what we're trying to avoid. Once we have roads that fall into that red zone, it becomes very expensive to bring them back up to serviceability. And our pavement, 20% of our roads have already fallen off that edge right there, where they require overlays or eventually reconstruction. So our pavement management strategy has been to try to catch the roads about right here before they go down to that steep decline. And that's what we focused on with our pavement preservation strategy for this biennial. So this year, we did crack seal, patching, and slurry seal. The crack sealing and the patching are kind of where we catch those roads that have just fallen below durability, where they're good candidates for preventative maintenance. Sometimes we can spend a very little bit of money patching in order to bring the quality of a road up enough where we can maintain it with a cheaper treatment like slurry seal. And crack seal falls in that category, too. This year, we did 89,000 linear feet of crack sealing, 86 square yards of patching, and 120,000 square yards of slurry seal. To give you some context, 89,000 linear feet, that's the height of the tallest mountain in the solar system, Olympus Mons on Mars. 86 square yards is about five parking spaces. And 120,000 square yards is about the size of an Amazon warehouse. Next year, we're adding in these roads in blue right here. They've been selected with the same strategy, but they were a little bit better conditioned, so we felt okay putting them off to the second half of the biennial. We got a lot of our crack sealing done early, but we're going to do some patching, maybe a little bit more crack sealing, before we're able to slurry seal these roads in blue. So to get to slurry seal next year, we've still got project design and patching and crack seal projects to complete. Project design, we hope to finish sort of towards the end of the winter, with crack seal and patching finishing middle of the spring. And we hope to do slurry seal earlier next year, maybe early or midsummer, to try to avoid that time crunch we ran into at the end when the rains started to get here. So we're really pushing for, at the very latest, a July slurry seal as much as possible.
So this gives you an idea of the intensive communication effort that we went through for this. Because we hadn't done it for several years, we wanted to make sure people understood what the impact was going to be, and understood exactly where the impact was going to be, so it gave them plenty of time to plan their reroute. We had several goals with the project. One was to make sure everyone in the north end had time to plan their rerouting and make sure that they knew their commute was going to be impacted. We wanted to use door hangar notifications for specific You want to just advance? Yeah. We wanted to use door hangar notifications for specific roads that were being, for people who lived on roads that were being impacted. And as the schedule changed due to weather or contractor changes or decisions on a different way to manage the slurry sealing, on 192nd, for instance, that required re-notification. So we were out in the neighborhoods a lot. There was one, a couple of days that we were out in teams of two. We had eight people out there, and we walked miles that day. Overall, 6,497 pieces of mail via post office routes at 17 cents per piece, which is postage, which is pretty economical. And then we estimated that we did over 1,300 door hangers, in addition to the emails and face-to-face. The other consideration was we wanted to make sure businesses knew how their plans, how their businesses were going to be impacted, especially in the park over here. So I feel pretty good that there wasn't anybody that could say that they didn't know that slurry seal was coming, so.
So it looks like most of the slurry seal was on the south side of town. Very little was
The north side. Yeah.
Very little was done on the north side.
The north side, yeah.
Very little was done on the south side.
None was done on the north side this year, but as, I'm sorry, on the south side this year, but there will be next year.
Okay.
So, and then we'll move into service requests, which we used to call Citizen Action Requests in case that term doesn't sound familiar. Our department does the right-of-way service requests, and most of them come in via the website, but there are other methods that they come in. We had 277 service requests that came in just to the engineering department so far this year, and we've logged collectively over 1,300 hours on those, which averages out to about four hours per server, for service request. Some of the pictures that you see there, the bottom one in the center is ADA concern or visibility concerns, those are typical ones that come in. The tire, if there was work in the right-of-way for a franchise or other non-development services issue, that might be a service request that comes to us. And then visibility and passibility concerns that you see up in the right.
So a big, a big part of the work that I do is the traffic-related service requests. And since I got here, they've come in pretty steadily every week, anywhere from zero to nine per week. On average, it's about two or three. And that's over the last year that I've been here. I've received 161 service requests. On top of that, I had 43 waiting for me on my first day. So I think, looking at the numbers of these service requests, there are a few things that I thought were interesting statistics. I was happy about this. The most frequent time to close a service request, to turn it around, was actually zero days. About 20% of the service requests that I get, I'm able to resolve on the day they arrive. However, due to the nature of traffic studies, many service requests take a very, very long time to close, and we see that the average resolution time is just under five months. That's definitely skewed high by the very long service requests. It's also important to remember that more than half the service requests end up being turned around in less than two months. But still, it's a period of time sometimes to get a resolution to these sort of things. I've closed 150 service requests since I got here, and when you add that up and divide it out the way you do, it comes out to about 4.4 hours per service request for a traffic-related service request. The way that looks like, if you look at how I spend my time, that's about a third of my time overall. The other two-thirds of my time I spend making clever PowerPoint slides. If we want to talk about the content of the service requests, about 30% of them are operational issues, maintenance issues, quality of life sorts of things, but about 70% come in from residents with some sort of safety concern. Once we've had a look at those internally, we find that it's split more closely to 50/50. We have about 45% of our service requests result in some safety concern, and the other 55% are resolved in some way that doesn't affect safety. Now, this comes from concerns that residents have about things that may feel uncomfortable or unsafe, and sometimes that's the nature of traffic engineering. But it also comes from, we find, some of these operational, maintenance, or quality of life issues also turn up safety issues while we're exploring those as well. For the specifics of what sort of issues are being brought to us, the biggest one, when you group it together, is site distance concerns. About 20% of our concerns that come in from residents in the form of service requests are about site distance. And that could be a concern about being able to enter traffic, leave your driveway, or make a turn onto a road because your sightlines are obscured by vehicles, or by hills, or curves, or other things such as vegetation or signs. The next biggest category, we have speeding, and actually, all of this is just speeding. Right here, it's about 15% of our service requests are in some form or another residents being concerned that cars are traveling too fast in this place or another place. We have lots of other smaller categories that come in, and I won't go through all of these with you because we'd like to go home tonight sometime. But if you ever have any questions about what sort of concerns are being brought to us in traffic-related service requests, you can send me an email and I'm happy to talk about it. The big thing that I want to talk about right now, though, because it segues into my next topic, is that these service requests about speeding and about site distance concerns, they all require a speed study. And a speed study requires a piece of equipment and it requires length of time. And that's one of the big things that makes these service requests take so long to close, because we have to perform a study out there. After the speed study is complete, our site distance concerns require additional study, a site distance study out there where we can take measurements to find out what a safe speed for the sightlines that are available would be, and compare that to the speed that vehicles are traveling, and then decide if we need to either improve sightlines or slow vehicles down, or if there is a match, then just explain about how our site distance concerns are analyzed so that we can resolve that concern for the resident. So these speed studies, we do them with this little device. It's an Armadillo radar device. It measures the speed and counts vehicles. And what we like to have is seven consecutive days of 24-hour data. And the way we get that without working weekends is by leaving the thing out there for 10 days instead of seven days. Once we have, we put it out there on a Friday, we leave it out for an entire week, and then we'll pick it up on a Monday after the study's complete. Then we'll trim that data so that we have seven consecutive 24-hour periods. Because it's a 10-day process, we pretty much can do one speed study with one device every two weeks. And that means one device can be used about 24 times a year. So this year, we bought three more devices. This lets us do nearly 100 counts per year, and about 30 of those counts we're still leaving available for on-demand requests by residents, but 70 of those counts, we're doing proactive counts on places where we internally have judged the volume or speed characteristics of a road to be important. So one of the problems with counting a place the same time every year is that volumes tend to be higher in the summer and lower in the winter. So one road may look artificially low when compared to a summer count, or artificially high when compared to a winter count. So the way we get around that is we use our existing infrastructure that also collects data. Our speed feedback signs, our traffic cameras, and our loop detectors can all be turned into permanent count devices where we can get 365 days of volume data. And we use that volume data, or the plan is, we're coordinating with King County to bring everything into one place for this, but to use that data to calibrate our short-duration counts so that we have a good idea of the actual use on a road regardless of when it was counted. This is all part of the annual count program. We, sorry, we have 30 locations around town where we can collect 365-day data, and that includes the speed feedback signs that are being installed next year with Highway Safety Improvement Funds. So the benefits of the annual count program that we've started this year is faster response to service requests. Already, we're having some service requests come in where we're able to respond to them right away because we've already conducted a count in that area or a speed study in that area. And we can either let them know that we found that there wasn't concerning speeding behavior there, or that there is and we're aware of it and we're prioritizing it with our other projects. It also allows better self-service for residents. Once we get all this information on the website, residents will be able to look up speeds in their neighborhoods that were taken less than a year ago. And that may, and they may find that we have already identified the concern that they were going to get in touch with us about. It also allows improved quality of analysis for traffic safety. When we have a road with tin crashes, say, and it's a low-volume road, that might be a lot more concerning than a road that has tin crashes and is a high-volume road. So knowing the volume of traffic that our roads carry is critical for being able to prioritize our safety concerns and our safety projects. It also allows us more accurate pavement deterioration forecasting. Our pavement deteriorates with the weather, but it also deteriorates with the load it carries. And seeing which roads are carrying heavier loads allows us to do better long-term pavement preservation planning. Lastly, whenever we need to simulate roads for potential changes, reconfiguring stop control intersection to a roundabout, for example, or adding a new road where there wasn't one, having good volume data is critical to being able to make inferences about how that new infrastructure is going to behave.
So we're going to turn it over to Jared for right-of-way impact.
Hello. So these are types of the right-of-way service requests that we typically receive. So one being hazardous trees, site distance issues, pedestrian and vehicle access, and right-of-way encroachments. For hazardous trees, they do create potential hazards to all right-of-way users and private properties. They have the potential to damage overhead utilities, causing outages. As you can see, we, these are trees that are along 61st. We've been dealing with a lot of properties there, working with them, getting those removed. Site distance issues creates hazards for all right-of-way users. So you can see a couple stop signs that are not visible, some site distance concerns on the bottom, too. And we've been working with those property owners. Actually, those have all been completed. Pedestrian vehicle hazards create site distance issues, creates hazards for pedestrians and vehicle traffic. We have some sidewalks that have vegetation, trees encroaching into the road, bushes growing over the sidewalk, creating some access problems. Right-of-way encroachments. So as you can see here, these are potential hazards, and they do create site distance issues, create hazards to pedestrians and vehicle traffic, potential hazards for, or issues in the ways for public works and other utility companies having to work around them.
So that's kind of generally what we've been working on in 2019. Right now, I kind of want to give you just a brief overview of some of the things you can expect in 2020. So first off, we got the West Semamish River Bridge. We are advertising currently right now. The bids are going to, expect to be open in December, this coming December, looking at a council ward in January, with construction starting February, March in 2020, construction complete Fall 2022. And then we've got a long time for mitigation establishment. It's a 10-year period that we have for our permitting, so we will be actively maintaining that for 10 years after the project's done. We've got a little bit of a delay going on because of I-695 has raised a few concerns for us, and so we're... Ah! You got me saying 695. Rob's been saying 695, I think, every time this comes up. So the I-976 has raised some concerns with us regarding our funding, and so we're going to take a conservative approach and go to council in January, when hopefully by then we'll know whether or not the bridge is impacted by the loss in tax revenue.
Walkways and waterways projects, 68th Avenue and Wantney Drive are kind of on the same timeline. We're looking to advertise in March of 2020, and the first quarter of next year is going to be a lot of utility relocations to prepare for the project, so poles being moved. There's a substantial amount of gas on 68 that needs to be relocated. So there will be some work done the first quarter in both corridors. Bid opening, we're planning on that in March, council ward in April, starting construction in May, and roughly, the project should take two construction seasons. And we're also looking at, both projects are currently funded. Wantney Drive has some WashDOT ped bike money, and it also has some Sound Transit System Access Funds. We're still trying to find out exactly how those will be impacted, but also, at the end of this week, we'll find out if we get our TIB grant that we applied for, for roughly close to the same amount. So if for some reason those other funds were slowed or impacted, hopefully the TIB money will supplant that, but we'll find out at the end of this week.
Okay, almost done, I promise. We have an upcoming overlay project on Simons Road with some improvements, and the overlay will be from 163rd Place to 92nd, so bordering right up against Kirkland. There'll be modifications to the 84th Avenue intersection, and we will be upgrading the ramps to be ADA compliant. I believe right now we have about 19 ramps that are going to be upgraded. We're going to be extending bike lanes, and there'll be 4,450 linear bike lanes improved and extended with another 690 multi-use pass on one, or excuse me, you just talked about Wantney on Simons Road. This is scheduled for the spring/summer timeframe of 2020. And then we also have a sidewalk repair project coming up, a program coming up, and the main concern right now, where we've had most of the service action requests, cars, is mostly on 73rd, and I believe there is 20 spots on the west side of 73rd and 16 spots on 16th. So we'll be coming up with a plan to look at repairs for this kind of treacherous path, actually. And then there's two right around 68th. One is at 68th and 181st, right by the right aid there, there's a tripping hazard, and at, pretty close to the Fortune Inn Restaurant on 178th and near 68th. I told you it was going to be sweet and short.
And also, we're going to be looking at 61st Avenue, the sidewalk route there from 190th up. We've got an alternative analysis right now, but I want to revamp that and look at a couple other options, and so we're going to kind of dust off what we have, update the cost, and put together a proposal for what we can do for that section, so that'll be happening next year as well. Jared.
So we have, these are a couple of the big, larger projects that we have for our franchise utilities. We heard Puget Sound Energy Gas is presently going to install about 7,000 linear feet of new gas main, and I believe part of that's from Kent's 68th Ave project. They also have been replacing older mains and services, so getting a huge upgrade on a lot of the infrastructure. Currently, PSC is converting 2,500 feet of three-phase overhead power along Northeast 197th and 61st Ave, converting to underground, so we're real happy to see this. PSC is also replacing poles and reclosers for system reliability improvements along 68th and Northeast 198th Street, and there's a snapshot of the locations. Also, PSC, so a lot of these are PSC projects going on right now, so PSC's upgrading electric system in the 55th Ave area of the City of Lake Forest Park and within our jurisdiction.
Oh, Jared, hold on.
In case you, like I, didn't know what reclosers are, it allows you to isolate the sections of the wire so that it isn't impacting a larger service area, so it's a pretty nice upgrade.
Thank you. So that is our presentation for the evening. There, that just kind of highlights a lot of the things that we did. I've tried to capture the majority of the things that we do as a group on this slide. It would take a lot more time to talk about all of them, and I'm going to save you guys the pain of having to listen to it all at once. But engineering does quite a lot of stuff, a lot of it behind the scenes that most people don't see, and kind of wanted to take the opportunity to give council and the public just a snapshot of what it is that we as the engineering group do. So if there's any questions or comments you'd like to have, we'd be happy to take them.
Deputy Mayor. My ears perked up when I heard improvements at Simons 84th. I'm a, you know, that intersection has been controversial in the past. Could I just, could you talk a little more about what the changes are going to be at that intersection?
We're going to be putting some ADA ramps. I believe it's going to go across, we're kind of moving it over, and they're just going to, you know how it's kind of funky there, where, yeah. We're just going to put in kind of like a boulders and some plants in that area, and just kind of straighten out the way the intersection is right now. It's in design right now, so I don't have a firm on it, but it'll look a lot better a lot better than what it is now.
Okay, I'll be curious to see the design.
Which is not a stretch, right?
To, to clarify, what we're doing is the, the existing, the way, if you remember the way that intersection is, the sidewalk, the curbs are pretty far apart. We're bringing the curb closer to, from the east side, closer to the west side, so we're narrowing the gap of that intersection. You know how right now, there's that dead space of pavement that's striped? We're gonna extend the sidewalk into that area and then landscape the, the, the space in between so that it's just not empty asphalt space. We're moving the asphalt, putting something in there that will, um, not be an repurposed surface, but bring the sidewalk closer so the crossing is shorter, making it more direct for vehicles to get onto 84th.
We're also avoiding, um, right-of-way impacts there, too.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're doing that.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Curtis.
I just want to thank you guys for all the work you do. It, it's easy when you see all these little bits and pieces that we approve and then they randomly get done, but to actually see it kind of all pull together and see, you, we, we as a city are doing an amazing amount of things and it doesn't happen without the engineers doing some design work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Smith.
I would also like to thank you and, uh, since I probably won't see any of you again sitting up there with me sitting here, um, I do appreciate all the work that all of you do and some of you, I've only known you for a short time, but, uh, I do appreciate it very much and so thanks for everything you do. And with that, I do have a couple of questions. Um, and one is on the encroachments and the hazards in the right-of-way. Is that, um, are we proactive on that or are we, is that only complaint-driven?
Uh, we, so we are pretty proactive. Once it's, uh, complaint-driven, uh, once we get a service request, we do a site visit, take a look and take notes and verify that if there is an encroachment, then we notify the property owner with a courtesy letter, uh, give them, give them a, a deadline to have it, have it, uh, either trimmed back or removed. And from there, if it's, they, the deadline expires, we then send out another letter that's more formal, that has our code language and everything on it.
Great. Well, I, I just think it's really important that we do whatever we can to keep that clear, so thank you for... And to clarify, uh, we're not actually out there scouring the city looking for these things, where, uh, if we see them, then we respond to them. If we get a complaint, we respond, but given our level of resources, you know, we just don't have the time to go out there and find all of these on our own, so...
Understood, yes. And then, uh, the other question is on the bridge. Way back in the design, uh, process and we talked about different types of art elements and what could be done and I remember one of the discussions, uh, which I, I remember it vividly and it had to do with, um, like, big legacy-type trees that would be, since we're losing all those poplars and it really is, you know, they are poplars, I understand, and poplars have problems, but it's also a vegetation barrier that, and it adds to the aesthetic of, of the area and I'm just curious, has that been, is that part of the design element, um, that will end up, or did go out to bid?
So, y- yes, all those poplars are getting chopped down to make room for the improvements that we're doing. Also to, um, uh, we had to provide some, some trees had to come out so we could relocate the utilities in advance of the construction. The plan calls for trees to line the corridor. We've actually put in a contract growth specification, which says that the contractor has to plant three-inch, uh, caliper diameter trees. So they'll be a very nice-sized tree, they won't be these little tiny little things, they'll be similar, I think, in size to what was planted at the hangar when those went in. So there'll be some nice trees that are gonna go in to replace, as large as we can reasonably, uh, plant trees. And then there will be some trees in the median on the south side of the, uh, the bridges will too.
Okay. And so, are there any big trees that will be, that will grow through the years to be, you know, extraordinary trees in that corridor, or is that not even possible? Or, I, I just remember, we had the discussion and I thought it was going to be part of it and I don't know whatever happened and I don't know honestly how the, the growth works and with the roots and, and everything, but I just would like to know if that was...
Yeah, the, the size of your planting strip will dictate the size of tree that you can put in to a, an area. And so what we did is we widened the planting strip to be six feet versus our foot, four-foot standard, so we can put a larger tree. I believe some of these trees are gonna top out at about 40 feet, um, over time. It's a long time.
Great.
But, uh, they're, they're a lot, they're going to be larger than, uh, the trees you would see along the curbs on 522.
Thank you.
So I got a couple quick ones here. Right-of-way encroachments. What are we doing about them? What are we doing about the responsibilities of the proper, property owners? Are we enforcing them? Are we just letting these encroachments continue? Are we allowing people to build fences? Uh, one of the slides looked like retaining walls and that into the public right-of-way. Are we doing anything about it?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we are. Once, once we get the service request, we take action immediately, get photos, document, uh, send the, notify the property owner. If, if they don't comply, then, then it does turn into a code enforcement issue and our, uh, code enforcement officer does take care of those. Helps out.
Yeah, and that wall that you saw in there was, um, removed.
Okay, good.
And put back the way it was so that the, the pedestrian walkway was intact, yeah.
Good, thank you. Uh, the other thing, we used to get counts, traffic counts on the, on the bridge. Uh, for a number of years, we got regular reports on what, what was happening on the bridge, how, what the traffic counts were. Uh, I haven't seen those for a long time. Um, and that's what the original counters were purchased for, was to get us counts on Simon's and on, uh, up the approach, both sides of the bridge. When, when can we start seeing that data again?
Uh, I believe we have some of those counts scheduled.
Okay, and, and, and we will, we can get some of the historical data to go along with it, right? So we can see how much traffic is increasing, say, from 2008 to, to, to 12, to now.
Right, yes, we have all that historical data. In fact, I, I think I put it together for Rob a couple months ago when you requested. I emailed it to him.
Good, I'll look forward to that then. Thank you. Thank you all very much. If there's no further questions from council, we really appreciate, uh, everything. All right, staff report.
Mayor and Councilwoman Debbie Bent is coming up. Please to report that today was the first day for our new Chief of Police, Brandon Mowen. Um, we'll have him come and say hi to you at a future council meeting. Uh, Chief Horabath, as you know, was, uh, promoted to captain in the Sheriff's Department, so that's why he's leaving us, but he has been kind enough to stick around for two or three days, so there's some overlap with, with him and our new chief, Brandon Mowen. Um, and, uh, I made sure that the county wasn't going to charge us for that overlap, so... With that, Debbie, take it away.
Thank you. Um, this is just an update to council to let you know, um, that we will need to withdraw from the, uh, grant agreements for the St. Edward Ballfield Project, uh, the amount of $750,000. Um, in the last update to RCO, we asked if we could amend the grant conditions and after asking several ways if we could do that, the basic short answer was no. Um, so we do need to withdraw. It does not preclude the city from applying in, in a future year, uh, for grants, but, uh, we needed to be upfront with RCO and let them know that, um, the project deadline is, is going way past what the RCO grant conditions allow, that we won't be able to secure control and tenure, um, and for other reasons that we, we could not meet. Um, so we will plan on submitting the letter, which was attached to the memo, um, to RCO to let them know that we will be, be withdrawing. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the report. I-976 update.
Yeah, just a verbal update. Um, as you know, it passed and, um, that means that, um, as soon as December 5th of this year, we won't be able to collect the, uh, we won't be receiving the $20 per vehicle that the state's been collecting on our behalf. That translates into about $360,000 a year to our operating budget. Um, on the capital side, which is separate from operating...
Can I get a question on that? There was talk that if an injunction's obtained, that, that will still be collected.
Yeah, so I'm talking about, uh, barring any injunctions or court orders or anything. Yeah, so we'll see if that happens between now and, and whenever. But, um, so on the operating budget, that'll be a hit, um, to our budget. Uh, I'm recommending that we just absorb it in 2020, but, uh, we'll definitely need to take a look at that and that's, obviously worsens the structural operating problem that we've been talking about. On the capital side, which is separate from the operating budget, um, John alluded to some possible funding that might be in jeopardy. One is $12 million for our bridge that's out to bid right now. So we haven't heard that it's, the money's going away and I didn't even think that it would be in jeopardy because it comes from the connecting Washington account, which is a separate pot of money from the motor vehicle fee, but, um, looks like, um, the governor's putting everything on the table right now. So, um, the governor has said, um, if your project is not underway, then state funding for that project needs to be paused for the moment. So we're trying to get a definition of what underway means. We're, we're thinking, um, we're hoping that out to bid means underway, but they won't, they won't give us an answer on that and I think the soonest we're gonna get an answer is when the governor puts out his preliminary proposed budget in, uh, probably about December 20th. So we'll get a, hopefully get some direction on that and then, uh, cross our fingers if we can keep the 12 million in and then, and if bids come in reasonable, then city council can award the bid for the bridge in January. In addition, about $3.5 million of money that's already been secured for 180th Drive, sidewalks and bike lanes may also have a big question mark on it. 1.5 million of which is, um, the system access grant that we just got from Sound Transit and another 2 million is Ped Bike money from the state. So, um, that's also another reason why we, uh, we're asking you, asking you to give us some discretion on when to issue the bonds for walkways and waterways, 'cause, um, if, um, 180th Drive loses $3.5 million of funding, then we'll need to figure out what to do, including maybe just building a portion of it and not all of it, but that would take time to redesign and all that. We were planning to go out to bid on 180th and 68th in February. And then, we were gonna be asking for some funding, extra funding for 68th Avenue out of the transportation budget, 450,000. We'll still ask for that, but given what's going on, that, that's less likely. And then other future projects like the, uh, the funding for studying a pedestrian, well, multimodal, uh, crossing over 522, um, that might be put in jeopardy as, as well as the $8 million for the final section of 522. So it's a lot of money that we're talking about that's gonna, that could be affecting Kenmore. Don't have answers on all that yet, but, um, many millions of dollars now have a question mark on them on the capital side of the budget. So not, not, not to be confused with the operite, operating side of the budget. Um, the, the operating side of the budget is taking a $360,000 hit annually. Um, the, the capital budget, which is one-time funding, uh, could, could see many millions of dollars, which would drastically affect a lot of capital projects that we have. So, that's my report.
All right. Councilmember comments? Reports and issues. Councilmember Smith.
Um, so, a long time ago, we had a meeting late at night and somebody brought a candy dish out. And that candy dish, I believe, had M&amp;M's in it. And it allowed the council to function with a smile and to get through the meeting, uh, in a more cordial and productive means. And so, um, I've always thought how important that is because you need to have some levity in the, in the moment sometimes. We deal with lots of serious issues and it doesn't mean because you have a smile on your face that you can't, you know, still have a candy dish. So, with that, I have, I have a candy dish that I would like to give the council. And it is, for those moments that get a little serious, it can be budget, it can be, it can be all kinds of stuff. We deal with a lot of, and I know in eight years, we've dealt with a lot of heavy stuff, but it's important to keep it light. So, on it, it says, "Happiness is good puns, big smiles, and balanced budgets." So, feel free to take one and pass it on down. And that's all I have to add.
City Attorney, is this okay? Councilmember Marshall.
All right. Yes, nothing more.
Councilmember Curtis.
Be happy to stop by until...
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrebnik.
Uh, nothing to add, except just a, uh, heartfelt thank you to Councilmember Smith.
Um, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I actually want to, um, talk a little bit about 976, um, kind of bouncing off what the city manager was talking about earlier. So I do want to point out that at least on election night, and I think the numbers have grown since election night, but I haven't been able to look at the precinct data. On election night, 976 was failing in Kenmore by 54%. I imagine that's grown to probably, just my guess, my best guess here, probably at 58, um, possible a bit higher. So, the people of Kenmore were against this initiative. The people of Kenmore wanted, wanted us to be able to continue, um, funding our basic infrastructure. Two, I'm working on the ETP legislative agenda with, I'm actually at a meeting last week with Bellevue Councilmember John Stokes and Woodinville Councilmember Susan Bounde Sanders and we are making 976 a kind of separate bullet point and as part of that, we're asking, um, a couple things. One, we're asking that the, and we're still working on final language, we're asking for the state to, um, fulfill the promises made in the working, in the connecting Washington revenue package in 2015 so that all of us who are working on projects for the last few years and we're counting on that money can continue that, including the Semamish River Bridge. Uh, and we're also asking the state, uh, for other, you know, revenue sources or to make us whole in some other way with the lost TBD funding. Because I, I think Rob just painted a pretty dire picture of what that, what that means for us when it comes to basic road maintenance. So that's gonna be kind of a central part, I think, of the, at least the ETP legislative agenda. Third, I kind of wanted to, this might be a question for Rob or maybe the city attorney, but there are lawsuits, uh, going on right now about 976 with Seattle, Lakin County, Sound Transit and some other, um, Grant County, I think, is, is on the lawsuit. Uh, would there be, um, any added value for us to file amicus on this to, I don't know, find some way, 'cause we are being, I mean, there's no argument that, that we're definitely being harmed by this initiative.
I can look into that and also apprise the council of other entities that may in fact be submitting those amicus, such as WASSAMA or even the WAPA.
I think it might behoove us to, um, not just sit on the sidelines when we're being threatened like this.
Understood.
Yeah, AWC, as you know, has, which represents us, uh, has joined in the lawsuit. So, all right, but yeah, we can get back to you on whether to have Kenmore specifically get involved.
Thank you, and that's all I've got.
Um, so, Deputy Mayor and I will be going to San Antonio March of the National League of Cities, Congress of Cities meeting and, uh, I am moderating a panel at that meeting and the panel is entitled, "Closing the Digital Divide in Small Cities." So, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting more name recognition there for the city of Kenmore, so with my involvement in NLC. the panel is entitled Closing the Digital Divide in Small Cities. So I'm, I'm looking forward to getting more name recognition there for the city of Kenmore with my involvement in NLC. Also, had the opportunity this past week to meet with Councilmember Nicole Wells. She's had some striker amendments for this uh PDA that they're forming to help deal with the homeless issue. I've also talked with Chairman Dermott on that. Councilmember Dembowski, I've talked with him this past week on um on dredging of the channel out there in, by Lake Point. As you know, we were awarded six-and-a-half million dollars this past year to do the dredging. We did a dredge material study, and we're assured that there's enough money there to to complete the dredging project. And um it turns out, the county is the sponsor. We never accepted ownership of that channel, so I was talking with Councilmember Dembowski about the county stepping up on its end and helping when necessary and if necessary with the dredging of that end. I know Nancy's been very, very active in that, Nancy Ausley, and she is um working with the district corps and uh making sure and trying to get this done. And my understanding is it'll start next year. And so, anyway, slow but sure progress. Also, the last thing is, we have been talking a number of years, for a number of years, about a, not so much memorial, but more of a recognition for people who have served and people who will serve in the military. There was talk about putting it out, a statue perhaps, out in front of City Hall. Then there was talk of doing something over in the town square, the hangar area. And the last one, the Shaw Crawford, has uh been in contact with the city about perhaps doing something out by that water fountain. We have talked about this for years. I really think that we should try to do something here relatively soon. I know this was Councilmember Smith's original idea, and I think it's sort of a tribute to him and the time he has served on this council, and he's really never asked for anything. I think we ought to really try to get this done. It's for the veterans in our community, and so I would really like to see a concerted effort to get some small recognition that we can mount out there by, by the, the water feature and, and have some remembrance and respect for the veterans who have served and the ones that will serve in the future. So I'd like to see it. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, um, thanks for noting that. I would definitely say, don't do this for me, though, 'cause I, this, you said.
I know, indirectly, for the veterans.
And I know what you meant, but it's like, I don't wanna conflate, too. And, and I would love to see it, I know we spoke about it about a month or so ago, and I'd be happy to, to do whatever needs to be done, even well after I'm off the council, just to see it through, whatever we can do, and, and I, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a bummer it didn't happen, and, and I take significant responsibility for that, 'cause it should have happened by now, and so I'd be happy to work on that.
So, yeah, anyway, if we can see our way clearer to doing something out there relatively soon, I, I, I think it, it would be a wonderful thing for, for the city.
Well, I, I, I don't know if I should say anything of this. I mean, is, are you, like, if nothing else was said, and you went on to your next item, is, is that direction to staff to bring on a new project?
Not necessarily, a plaque. I'm just looking at something simple.
Okay, all right.
Anything that we could do.
I guess I'd need, if council wants, if, yeah, if council wants staff to take on something new, I need more clear direction than some, mentioning something and passing it and then going on to the next item.
So is, is there any objection?
Well, and, and again, if, if you want us to add something new to our, to our, um, to our workload, then what comes off the workload? So again, I don't think you can just say, any objection to staff adding this new project? Okay, all in favor? Great, okay, staff add this to your list. Those days are over. Uh, and so if you want us to add a, a veterans memorial project to City Hall, let's talk about it in light of other priorities, and then you'll tell me what comes off the list to add this on to the list.
And I think that's a tremendous discussion for us to have in January.
Okay, I just don't want you to feel like you can mention something in passing during council comments, and now we have to do it.
That's fine.
Okay.
And on that same light with, with the plaque, is we had talked about and got staff approval on the plaque for Coach Carroll.
Yeah, I don't have anybody to work on it, and I'm just gonna try to get it done this biennium. I'll, I'll probably work weekends to make that one happen.
Ask some questions. All right. Um, that is all we have, unless there's any other business to come in front of us. We're adjourned.